See Nikki here. Hi Nikki. I'm gonna call Amy to order. I do believe we have a quorum, but I haven't counted. Let's see.
Seven.
We had a few friends who couldn't be here, and I know that Amy has to duck out, so don't anybody leave.
Well, this isn't gonna be here. Sharon?
Yep, so Sharon, Brett obviously isn't in executive session, so could you guys remind me to text him? Or somebody can text him when we go back, when we get out of executive session? Um. Who am I forgetting? Mary should be...
Sean.
Mary should be...
Sean.
Sean should be here.
Alright. You just have to watch from when you go into executive session.
Got it. Yeah, Mary and I just wrapped up personnel, so I'm sure she'll be here shortly. Okay, so let's call the meeting to order. Um, I am going to say the pledge of allegiance, so you can rise if you choose and just mute and you can say the line with me. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks Steve. Always good for the flag. Alright, so Mike, do you have the motions handy?
I do. I just wanna uh make sure that Joan is not here. Is that right? She doesn't conflict?
Uh yeah, I uh I let Ms. DeAngelo's knows that she did not need to come for this.
Okay, I just wanna make sure for the motion. Okay, so I will move to go into executive session at 6:01 PM pursuant to Mass General Law, um, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Unit A and Unit C. Executive session.
Superintendent Downing, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGuire, uh, and Director of Human Resources Emery Stojkis. School committee member Brett Collins will be excused from executive session due to a conflict of interest. School committee will return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks Steve. And I do declare that discussion of strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, on the Unit A and Unit C, I do declare. Um, so... Let's call the roll. I say yes, Steve? Can I say yes, Joe?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Alright, we are in executive session. Back in charge. I already feel better.
Oh no, I didn't mean to do that.
Please do. Did you let Keely in? Oh, there she is. Okay, I'm gonna let her in. Here we go. Alright, everybody, we are back. And we have ended our executive session. We're now gonna pick the agenda back up, just a few minutes behind, but that's okay. Uh, we have one citizen's comment this evening, and that is Keely Noosaki. Hi, Keely.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, the microphone's yours.
Hello, um, here for my usual routine, I guess. Um, I continue to speak out at these meetings because I think things need to be better. I think we all know that we know what normal used to be, and I, I do not like the phrase "the new normal," and I hope we can be better than that. So, um, I've spoken out repeatedly in these meetings, and more often than not, I am the only citizen comment. I have met with the superintendent, I've spoken with school committee members, I've spoke with the director of the Nishoba Board of Health, I have called DESI multiple times. I have also spoke with a school committee chair in another town regarding what their plan is. Um, I've looked at the research, both positive and negative regarding masking, is obviously what I'm talking about. Um, but all these mandates are developed on guidance and recommendations. And again, there is, there is still not enough data to support or refute masks, and if they're actually working. Um, however, come January fifteenth, I know it's been discussed over and over again that we do plan to go forward with the optional masking. However, this isn't an off-ramp. They refer to this as an off-ramp. However, the, the masking is optional for those who are vaccinated. So, one's education should not revolve around a family or individual choices. And I think making masking optional for those vaccinated is still creating division. Um, I think for young children, again, I have a young son. When you're seeing people suddenly have the option to mask and possibly you're not one of them, I think that's creating division, and that's gonna affect children greatly, because it's already affecting everything. So what are we doing here? Who are we protecting at this point? Um, vaccinated or not vaccinated, there are breakthrough cases left and right. Um, children still show to be very resilient with this, this um COVID, in that there's low transmission rates, there's low hospitalizations, and if they're getting COVID, it's mild. Um, so they remain low risk. So children need to be children, and the masking needs to stop. Um, many will likely choose to mask even if they're vaccinated and if there's the option. Um, but when are we gonna acclimate to what's happening and get to what our normal was? Um, there will always be risk, there will, there will always be disease, there always has been a risk. Um, my understanding is COVID doesn't make you sick. It's, it's your immune system's response to COVID. So a mask is not improving your immune system. Your health choices are what improve your immune system. So everyone can throw on a mask all the time, you're likely still to get sick. I am a healthcare worker. I got COVID last year treating a patient. I wore my mask, I wore my PPE, I did it all. It didn't stop anything, and that continues to happen. Um. So, again, I think parents need to be able to parent and make choices based on their family, their health decisions, and their personal beliefs. And honestly, put yourself in my position. I've been the minority through all of this. Um, I've been the only person speaking, so I don't know if that means that people don't care or people don't wanna speak up. But it, it's just, I'm gonna be like my son, it's not fair. Um, if, if there's gonna be optional masking, it should be optional for everyone. And if what it says in the DESI paperwork is the recommendations in the guidance, that's not a mandate that unvaccinated people should have to wear a mask or vaccinated people should not have to wear a mask. It's guidance, and people either follow the guidance, they don't follow guidance. It's still a decision you have to make. It's not a mandate. Um, so again, I just feel like if it's optional masking, that should be the off-ramp, and it should be optional, not optional for some and not for others. That is all. Um, always here if you wanna contact me and talk about any of this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Keely.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody, so we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is the consent agenda. And I will turn to my trusty partner here, Mr. Horace. Do you have a motion for us?
Yes. Um. I move to approve the consent agenda of December fifteenth, continuing the meeting minutes of December first, two thousand twenty-one, and the warrants of December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, I beat, I beat you all. I seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. Oh, Rich, do you have a question?
I was just seconding.
Oh. Okay, guys, so no discussion. Let's take the vote. I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Karen?
Uh, I'm abstaining. I wasn't, I couldn't make that meeting.
Brett?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Rich?
Why, yes.
Think I got everybody there? Alright. So the consent agenda passes. We are now gonna move on to the superintendent's update, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Downing.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. And uh, I'll share with everybody, I am on here twice. One is myself, one is Downing Computer, and that'll be used uh when I sort of dive into some updates on the data dashboard. Uh, tonight, we are gonna dig in a little bit as uh this committee asked me to go dig in at, from our October twentieth meeting to more metrics and understand what other systems are doing. So I'm coming back with some of that information today. Um, also gonna speak to uh just briefly the uh native Nishoba Regional High School Resource Officer, MOU process right now. Um, and then in the teaching and learning report, there was a request to speak to Esser. Uh, Dr. McGuire was instrumental in, in drafting that grant, so Dr. McGuire will be speaking to that portion in the uh, the regular teaching and learning report. Um, so we got lots of things to talk about tonight. Um, so on that vein, I'll, I'll just kinda go through the memo, and then I think tonight, Madam Chair, I'd like to, typically, we, we do questions at the end of the report. I would like to stop at the end of the, the uh COVID nineteen report and field questions specific to that first, and then go on to the uh MOU and then the teaching and learning report, if that's okay with you. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so um, just bringing you up to speed um on where we are today. Uh, we're happy that the weekly COVID safety checks are now up and running. I'm gonna show you some elements in the dashboard once I go through the talking points to show you where we are with that. This is an instrumental tool in helping us identify cases. And um, in that way, uh, I know we talked about a goal of having seventy percent um consent rates. Well, our consent rates at five of our six schools are above seventy percent. So we've been very happy with the response on consent rates. Um, is, and then also with that is the test and state program for when we identify, have uh, we identify or are notified of positive cases in our school system. We then go through the protocol to look at close contacts in the three-foot circle and the six-foot circle. And that program has also been very successful. I, for the sake of the community that's watching out there, those two programs are bound together by DESI's expectations around the testing programs. That is not something we can decouple. That is part of the agreement in participating in a program that is fully funded for us at no cost to our school system. So, in that way, um, there's gonna be some changes around the test and state program. We're getting new guidance from the Nishoba Boards of Health, um, that is coming from state guidance as well. Uh, but the, the basic ideas here, I'll be looking at my talking points, is that um as we look at the taste, test and state program, our, our vaccination rates have gone up tremendously. We'll look at that in just a minute. Um, and students, faculty that are fully vaccinated and that are close contacts are not subject to quarantine. So some of the questions we were having very early on around people that were uh close contacts but unvaccinated, say uh because of a parent or because of the hockey coach. Um, under past protocol, if you're unvaccinated, you have to go through the quarantine time. If you're vaccinated, fully vaccinated, you don't. And that's a key instrument, and that is through the guidance of the Nishoba Boards of Health. Um, so the other piece is um, one of the parts of that close context is the three to six-foot ring. And so we've been notifying families that are in the three to six-foot ring, and there's a lot of administrative responsibilities that our nurses have to do uh in these notification processes. What we've come to find out is that that three to six-foot ring, we're not uh, when we notify families and then they follow up, we're not finding positive cases as a result of that. Um, and if we have, they've, they've been singular in nature. Um, so we don't believe that that particular notification piece is gonna be necessary in the future, and we're looking towards uh really that January eighteenth date as a time when we would stop that protocol. Part of the reason is, is we are gonna be picking up an administrative responsibility, and that the Nishoba Boards of Health will no longer be monitoring close contacts um of individuals, schoolchildren, outside of their school experience. So in other words, what they would do is the Nishoba Boards of Health would notify the family, okay, you're the close contact. Maybe you were on the volleyball team that had a, a situation, and um, then at the end of that quarantine period would produce a letter, and that would be presented to the school district, and the child comes back into school. They're no longer going to be doing that. And so that's gonna fall upon the school district to follow up on those cases. So if we have unvaccinated individuals that are in a quarantine situation due to a close contact outside of school, our nursing staff is gonna have to follow up with that, that family and that student at the close of that time. We're not quite sure what, what the increase in administrative demands are gonna be on our nurses at this moment, but it's something I know uh Nurse Gobekci is, is studying deeply. Um, and we're developing communication protocols to families to ensure that at the end of their quarantine period, they're being contacted by the school, and they cover, you know, the, those essential questions about returning back into school. So that's gonna be some, some changes in our, in our testing protocols. Um. I did uh, so, so as we look at that, I, I will now, so I kinda wrapped in the Nishoba Boards of Health update with that as well. Um, the vaccination rates have taken off. And uh, with taking off, we're getting closer to those metrics of being considered for optional masking. So as we talk about optional masking, I, I wanna make something very clear to uh this board and to the community at large, is that right now, we are in a DESI mask requirement. We are required to be in these things, and under the terms of being required, we can apply for a waiver to not have to meet that requirement. If, in the end, DESI pulls that requirement off, uh, say, January fifteenth, we're not in a position where we have to then apply for a waiver, because the requirement has been removed. We only have to apply for a waiver when the DESI uh mask requirement is in place, and it is currently in place until January fifteenth. We did receive notice that uh, uh, we had a meeting with the commissioner today, and he notified all the stu- superintendents in Massachusetts that he'll be coming back at the beginning of January, uh, because with the onset of the Omicron variant, um, uh, even though maybe some early indicators are showing that there's much more significant spread, but not as severe illness, those types of things that are not definitive about yet, so they wanna spend the next month watching that. So he's gonna come back to the superintendents, you know, right after the first of the year, when we return from vacation with what the state guidance is, if indeed the masking requirement is extended. So that sets us up really for, for the key elements of what I'm talking about in terms of what we would wanna do for masking requirements here in Nishoba. If indeed the, the masking requirements are advanced forward, then we would um apply, and we applied for the waiver. We have to. It's, it's not our choice. We have to exceed eighty percent, and in alignment with state guidance, unvaccinated students and staff would be required to continue wearing the masks. So if the statewide mask requirement is in place, it's not up to us if we do optional masking for um all of our students. It is part of the requirement. DESI will not approve the waiver if the waiver we're asking for is optional masking for all. They will only approve optional masking for those that are vaccinated. So I just, uh, I'll reiterate that one more time for clarity. Under the mask requirement, um, we can apply for a waiver. Only individuals who are vaccinated are eligible for optional masking as written in the DESI mask requirement. When the DESI mask requirement is removed, it is then up to us how we would um apply that and how we would want to do that. So right now, the vote we took in October twentieth was to extend the DESI mask requirement in the event that it were extended. And so we are extending it under that language now, so we could look to continuing the extension of that, but look at our own language to that as we move forward. But as of right now, we are subject to the language that DESI has provided us. So uh, with that in mind, Madam Chair, I think I'm gonna share my screen here. Uh, as we talked about, um excuse me, please. As we talked about this in October, um, uh, there were a couple of mentors, members that did ask about, excuse me while I work out my technology here. There were a couple of members that did ask about, you know, what are the types of metrics that we can be looking at and consider when we are, are looking at optional mask in our schools? Because just eighty percent vaccination rates and seventy percent participation uh in, in uh weekly COVID checks, we, we're looking for some more definition. So I asked around with various superintendents, and I discovered one model that is, is happening at Medway that, that is something for us to consider, and the language I should adapt or change some of the language in my report. Um, I'm advancing to you these, these metrics, but uh, I think the language I said was um, I'm recommending to the committee that we adopt. I, I would amend that to say, "consider adopting," because um, I've received some more information from our Nishoba Boards of Health that will, will certainly wanna take into consideration. But if we look at the first metric, and that is eighty percent vaccination rates, column D in the data dashboard shows the collected data of fully vaccinated individuals at each one of our locations. What's important to note is Florence Sawyer School is joint the Emerson School and the Florence Sawyer School together. So, right now, you can see the vaccination rates of fully vaccinated individuals has gone up dramatically. And that is because our elementary students in grades K through five, and many of our sixth graders, were eligible for uh the recent approval of the vaccine, and uh they must have participated very early because they've received the second dose in order to be fully vaccinated. So that tells us our community was very eager and had acted upon uh taking advantage of, of having children five to eleven vaccinated. Here's the column that is partially vaccinated, and you can see the total here of both of those is that in the coming weeks, it's, we know that right now, Nishoba Regional High School uh meets the eighty percent criteria. But in the coming weeks, perhaps as early as after January first, Hale Middle School may also meet that eighty percent requirement, and four of our other schools are looking to reach at least the seventy percent requirement. So more of our schools are gonna be meeting that metric to uh consider optional masking. Then the next piece is around consent for testing. And the consents for testing, you can see the way I've changed this page and rebuilt it is that you would see each school separated out here. And this is the number of students and staff, for instance, that are at Center School, and five hundred and twenty-one individuals, students and staff, have consented for a total of eighty-eight percent of that population. And you can see that for each one of our schools. Well, we've had one week, yay us, of uh COVID safety checks at all of our schools, so we have some introductory data that we can introduce here. And that is, of our five hundred and ninety-one folks, four hundred and sixteen participated. Not the full five twenty-one, and we'll get to that in a moment. But they had a participation rate at their environment of seventy percent. So that while we have seventy percent of our, our folks there, eighty-eight percent there, seventy percent participated, Medway suggested the metric of uh fifty percent participation rates in their weekly COVID testing. That was through their recommended boards of health and epidemiologists that they went through. In a meeting I had uh with our Nishoba Boards of Health, they agreed that that is robust. Um, no, fifty percent is a robust threshold, and they would support that idea. So we can see that if we're using fifty percent as our metric, uh, just in the very first week, Center School, uh, Hale was just about there, MRA was just there, Luther Burbank was almost there, Florence Sawyer uh had reached that fifty percent mark, and then you can see it in Nishoba High School, it's fifteen percent. So some of that is in methodology in our elementary and middle schools, many of the grades. We go down the hallway to do our assessments just outside the classroom, and so it's, it's a very easy place to be doing some accountability to that. In our high school, it's done during uh the long block of the lunch block, and so students themselves need to take the initiative to go. So I know they're working hard on doing promotions at Nishoba High School to do those things. And I've spoken with principals about that to bring those increases. And also, uh, we saw that while uh we're highly vaccinated amongst our adult population in the schools, uh, not as many participated in uh the weekly COVID checks. And so I sent a notice out to our faculty last week that, let's model for our students' participation in this program so that we can continue to, to measure the, the relative health of our environments. And it has teased out a few cases that we were able to isolate and, and, and have students enter into proper protocols um for which their families were prescribed. These were asymptomatic cases that we not, may not have otherwise known about, um, and which is good in the home, because if we can find those asymptomatic cases, that means in your home, you're able to go through the proper measures to take to ensure the safety of other individuals in your home, not knowing the dynamics of everybody's home in the system. Some people do have medically fragile individuals that are living in their homes with them. So that is the, the, the two metrics that we really talked about most and where our current state is. And I will go into the next two pieces, um, of which uh, the first one is less than two percent positive test data of in-school data and three percent uh in the community transmission. So I wanna first go to the bi-weekly COVID cases by town. So what I was able to do with this metric is I pulled out the data from the Massachusetts Data Dashboard and added in uh the total test data and the percentage of positive tests found in those communities. And so if we look at just the two-week period that shouldered, um, uh, these are the two weeks that shouldered Thanksgiving. Uh, in the town of Bolton, fifty-five, five hundred and fifty-five uh residents, as recorded in the MAS system, MISs system, uh, were tested. Three point zero six of those individuals came out positive. Seventeen total individuals were um the raw number. So you can see the total um of positive tests is not based, uh, the total uh positive test percentage is not based off of population, it's tests administered. And I'll get to why that's important when we move over to the COVID cases by school. Uh, you can see in Lancaster, that percentage of positive tests is at seven point three-six percent. And at Stowe, it's four, this is town data, four point six-two percent. And then I aggregated the three towns, because that's the metric by which we would have to look at uh Nishoba Regional High School. So when you aggregate the cases, the total positive the region is five point two-one percent. So by that metric of three percent, we were above those metrics indicating that we would want to remain masked. So with that explanation, I thought, do we have enough data yet to apply that methodology to our schools? So I went into the COVID cases by school and set it up uh similar to that. And we just are able to now get in some of that data um as we have started our weekly COVID uh testing protocols. Um, and so, uh, oh, excuse me, this is pardon me for just a moment, Madam Chair. Oh, yeah, excuse me. So uh, here's what we have, is that um the total uh tests that have been done in Center School, 'cause that's our um uh per se, uh, total tests that I've done for pool testing. And we know that there was one positive case out of the Center School community. What's important to note here is I've developed, this page, as you see, is currently under development, is that one case did not come from the weekly COVID checks. I'm adding that number so we can get a sense of what's our positive rate in the school. So you can see at Stowe, that particular two-week period is point two-four percent. At Hale, it would be point six- At Hale, it would be 0.65%. At MRE, 1.7, so on and so forth. So you can see those data points there to indicate, you know, what do those percentages look like for us? So when you look here, when your testing is really low, for instance, like at the high school of 15%, these seven cases were pulled from folks that identified it for us and notified us that there was a positive case. Well, if our pool testing is so low, so that drives up that percentage of positive tests. So that's why this page is under development because I'm still trying to work out how we can reflect that accurately to educate us on those pieces. So with that, I think I'm going to unshare my screen and just to make sure we get through those pieces. Yes, we did. And unshare my screen to, because you have the report in front of you that these are the types of metrics we can look at and consider when it comes to unmasking in a location. Now here's the important piece that I'll come back to. If we are in this place where the, let's assume the DESI masking requirement is extended. And let's say it was extended to, you know, whatever it is, March 15th, for instance. We could apply for the waiver to go to optional masking. Only students who are vaccinated would be eligible as required under the DESI mask requirement. So I don't even have an option for that. And when I did put in my application, my affidavit for Neshoba High School, as I said I would, and they had an official from DESI reach out to me and interview me. And he made it abundantly clear that the commissioner is not approving any applications unless a demonstration of that those that are not vaccinated would still be required to mask. So I just, and there is a follow-up procedure that they do have from the school districts that have applied for that. So I share that with the community and I share that all with you. If the DESI mask requirement were lifted and we elected to keep the requirement going, at that point, we could make a decision of if we would require masking for unvaccinated or not vaccinated. But it's because we're under the masking requirement regulation right now that that's not even a choice of ours to make. So I think right there, Madam Chair, is I'll pause before talking about the High School Resource Officer MOU to field any questions that the committee may have.
Thank you so much, Kirk. That is an enormous undertaking. I literally cannot believe you're being required to multitask in this way. The dashboard is amazing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll go to Karen first. Hi, Karen.
Hi. Yeah, this is, this is, this data is so helpful. Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So you're proposing that all of these pieces would have to be, am I understanding that right? That in addition to the 80% vaccination rate, we would also have to have greater than 50% participation in the testing, 2%, you know, less than 2% positive in school and less than 3% in the community. Is that correct?
Yes. And what I'll add to that, Ms. Divine, is there's an important piece of information that I think I glossed over unintentionally. I have vetted these metrics with our Neshoba Boards of Health. And they said, "Look, the two primary, most important factors are vaccinations and participation in weekly COVID checks." Those are the two big ones. And he said, "The issues that we have with the 2% metric for in-school, 3% metric for the community," as he said, "our individual communities are so small. Singular events can throw you off that really have no impact or even touch the school." And I'll give you an example of that. If you were to click over to the bi-weekly COVID cases by town and look at, it's the Stowe data. In the two-week period prior to Thanksgiving, or it actually went into the Thanksgiving week, there were total positive tests of 16. And then shortly after that, total positive cases of 32. And look at the percentages. So there's a hundred more tests, but the percentages really jumped up. And he said, "Kirk, you got to understand, we've had situations where we've done contact tracing on a Halloween party and have identified 16, 20 individuals at one singular Halloween party that is residents of the towns but didn't touch the schools." And so that's why in living in small towns, the 2% and 3% metrics are, but Neshoba Boards of Health said, "We commend you for looking at those as important metrics because community spread is important." The fact of the matter is, these numbers are a place where it could skew really what is a health-based decision there. It could be a valid angle to look at, but it's plausible. Which is why we would always come back for a consult with Neshoba Boards of Health on, I think, those elements because they would say to us, "Kirk, that was, maybe those 16 cases were at a group home around something centralized there and doesn't touch the school." So anyway, I just, I'm expressing caution myself, but I express, encourage our committee to look at those two with caution as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I guess that what I'm trying to envision is that some of these things are going to be constant moving targets, right? Not the vaccination, that's a constant. And hopefully, it's just going to keep going up. Hopefully, the participation in testing in school will continue to increase. But so if these percentages in school or in towns shift a little bit and one of those four pieces is now, we're not hitting that mark, does that mean that everybody has to mask up?
If we, yeah, if we adopt that as the criteria, then yes. And we would go then through a three-week period to ensure that. So we're going to be visiting back, Madam Chair. I believe our next date is January 12th. This is my mental calendar, correct? In that way, I think we'd want to come back and I will have the commissioner's decision at that point to understand the degree of urgency. Because the second thing I asked you all to do October 20th was to authorize the superintendent to make that call when the time is appropriate. And so these are the metrics I'm looking at. I want to get more guidance at this point on the 2% and 3% metrics because I want to make sure that data, I think, is something we would watch and consider. And I think keeping on the dashboard is important. But I would follow up with calls to our Neshoba Boards of Health on those two metrics to understand if there is school-based impact, if there is an increase in those percentages.
Okay, and I just have one other question. So if we can't make, you know, our optional masking available to those who are not vaccinated, how would that be monitored? I mean, I don't know how, I mean, how does a teacher, how does a staff member, somebody out in, you know, watching the lunch period while you're not masking lunch? But that's like, I mean, I don't know how you, how would that be sorted out? Or is that not known yet?
So I've asked on this. And I will say, I talked to one of my colleagues about this that went to unmasking and to optional masking. And for those that were required to mask, did not put that burden on the teachers. They had approximately 100 students to look at that, and they set out, so through the MI SNAP system, which is our system that integrates with the MIS system when you get your vaccinations, our nurses are able to get those lists. And so what this particular system did is they use that to notify their communities of saying, "We do not have a record of vaccination on file. We're going to be moving to masking on a certain day, optional masking on a certain date. If you want to be eligible, just provide us proof of vaccination." Because we'll assume that if you're not vaccinated, that if you don't provide that, that you're not vaccinated and you would have to wear your mask. And then that list was distributed to the administrators, to the administrators to monitor. So each administrator had 25 or 30 students that they would casually monitor and give subtle notice to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, Kirk. Any other questions around? Is that your hand, Amy? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do want to express my gratitude to Kirk for pulling together this dashboard. I mean, it's just, there's so much data. And this whole approach has been data-driven and transparent. And I think it's greatly appreciated by our communities and, you know, the school committee. So thank you for all the effort that you and your team have put into this to keep us informed.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I would like to say, as we've been doing this, Ms. Cohen, you mentioned the team. This is a team effort. And I think Dr. McGuire and Ms. DeAngelis have been very good partners. As I call them and say, "I got another idea. I want you to, we got to vet it out and work out all the bugs." And they've been very helpful in that regard, along with the entire nursing team and Nurse Go Backy.
Very grateful. Any other questions on the COVID piece of the superintendent's update? All right, I'm not seeing anything else. So I guess we can move on to the next section.
And Ms. Viverino, after I present on the Resource Officer, I just need to step away for a moment and then I'll come back to the meeting while Dr. McGuire does his report.
Sure.
So I've just included for you this year their public comment for SROs was out there this year from the Model School Resource Officer Review Commission. And so what I provided for you is our current MOU and the model MOU that has been developed, went through public comment and has now been developed. I am working with Chief Nelson on this and he and I will appear before this committee at a future date with any recommended changes to those MOUs. But I'm providing them to you today so that you're up to speed and can see that this is something that we're growing and monitoring now.
Excellent. Before Kirk steps out, does anybody want to ask any questions about the SRO or School Resource Officer MOU memorandum of understanding? Amy?
I guess from a big picture point of view, does our MOU have any significant differences from the model?
I haven't gone that depth into it, Ms. Cohen, to tell you the truth, because Model MOU recently came out, but we'll be studying that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Just for the community's sake, we have a School Resource Officer only at our high school, right, Kirk?
That's correct.
And so this MOU would apply to our high school School Resource Officer?
Yeah.
Is there a deadline or anything like that on when this would need to be adopted, et cetera, or even adopted?
I'll come back. When we have our planned session in January, we'll take a look at those.
Okay, great. Well, I thank you for bringing that to us. You guys can produce the document. And now maybe we'll move on to the next section.
Thank you. And I should be back in a little while.
Good evening, everyone. I want to report out on the teaching and learning update. This evening, I have three items that I want to discuss, one being the district early release day from last week, an update on our model school visits. And then as the superintendent explained, that I will discuss the grant funding for the ESSER III grants that we received this fall. First last Friday, December 10th, was a district-based early release day for all faculty and staff. I'm delighted to report out that Friday marked our first day of implementation of our social-emotional learning plans and our work with every Neshoba school. Over the past few years and the previous two early release days, as you know, district leaders and faculty have been participating in a variety of academies, workshops, conferences on the core competencies of social-emotional learning through our Train the Trainer model, which we've been working on for the past year. We're now in the process of delivering these strategies to teachers to use in their classrooms and to implement with students. We're aligning our work with the Castle Collaborative for Academic and Social-Emotional Learning. And you'll remember when Mark Brackett came last year to deliver his keynote, he spoke eloquently about Castle. We're aligning our work with the five core competencies of social-emotional learning, which are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, as well as responsible decision-making. Faculty and staff are now working to design lessons. They're routinely planning for how they will use these five approaches on social-emotional learning integration through their academic instruction, understanding that effective integration is requiring a mix of all five approaches to address the balance of social-emotional learning competencies over time with students, using their understanding in a variety of tools. All of our faculty and participants are working on redesigning a series of lessons to incorporate plans for teaching and implementing these strategies in the classroom. And so the objective for this year is for teachers to have developed and worked in these strategies into a variety of units of study in their classrooms to use with students. We're also planning on hosting a workshop in our Summer Academy to follow up on this and to plan for next year as well. This work is directly tied to our District Improvement Plan goal, number one, in outcomes of a social-emotional learning to intentionally integrate social-emotional learning strategies across all settings and then Ashoba community. And that comes right from the district plan. We're excited to be at this point, where we are in full swing in implementation of these core competencies and instructional strategies across all classrooms and settings within the NRSD community. So that was some exciting work that we did last Friday and that will continue for the next three early releases in the district. And then our last early release day is always focused on transitions where we do cross-district transition work across all of our schools. And I'll update you on those as they come along. Model School Visit update on Monday, December 6th and on Friday, December 10th, two teams from Neshoba went and visited two schools in the Natick Public School System and then the North Metal Sex Regional High School. They toured a total of the three school buildings and had the opportunity to tour classrooms, spaces, ask a variety of questions of district and school leadership and faculty. Both teams reported having fruitful experiences and were able to offer feedback through a survey we have generated for our visiting team members. We're now able to put a lot of that data together to share with our Neshoba communities. We'll also be sharing that with our design and visioning teams moving forward. This Friday, December 17th, another team will visit Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical High School. And Bolton Town Administrator Don Low will help facilitate this visit as he was on the planning team for Minuteman. Thanks to all of those from our communities who volunteered their time to visit these model schools and will continue to reach out to schools not only for building space, but also for innovative academic programming. And we're now kind of looking at schools who offer those kinds of new and innovative programming so we can start sending people to those districts as well. And then finally, I will share my screen here just to bring up some graphs as it relates to ESSER funding. So as we reported out over the summer, we were busy working on the ESSER III grant from the American Rescue Plan Act. The Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESSER as it is known, number three grant was submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in October. The total allotment for the grant for Neshoba was $830,895 for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23 school years. In addition, the school district is required to spend at least 20% of this grant allotment, which would equal $166,179 on disproportionate impact in learning loss as a direct result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We did develop a survey in collaboration over the summer with a variety of other school districts. I worked with a variety of other school districts on developing this survey to find common ground in sending this out. It was a requirement of the ESSER III grant to send a survey out to communities to solicit feedback on how that money should be spent. And we were also required to report out on how we are spending that money. We received 1,060 responses. And the data that follows speaks to the responses based on our questions in the survey. So first question was an allowable use of ESSER III funds as debt is to be dedicated to facility repair and improvements that enable school operations and reduce the risk of virus transmission. Also tied to improvements, what improvements our community felt and deemed necessary to fulfill this need? Uh, ventilation, air purification, uh, were the two top responses in that. Um, as well as looking at heating and air conditioning as, and as well as our health facilities. We were also um, asked to address unfinished learning from the COVID nineteen pandemic when students were out on remote and hybrid learning. The grant required at least twenty percent of the funding to be dedicated to academic learning loss. And we asked which areas people believed would best address this area. Overwhelmingly, uh, people were looking for targeted small group to, um, instruction, um, as well as additional personnel to support that. Um, data-driven, evidence-based programming, as well as additional instructional resources. Um, we were also addressing um, our extended program, uh, day programming by bringing that back. After-school programming, our summer acceleration, uh, learning academy, as we reported out at the beginning of the year, um, as well as some other supports. As it related to prevention and mitigation strategies, people were most interested in maintaining healthy facilities and continuing to maintain those kinds of facilities. Next was COVID testing in schools, which superintendent has reported out um, several times within our school committee meetings. And then also an allowable use of the S R three funds was to provide social, emotional and mental supports for students. And we asked people to select the supports they would like to see the district to consider. People were interested in curriculum supporting students' needs, staff training to support students' social emotional needs, um, as well as counseling services um, for students. So just as the pandemic has been a dynamic process, planning and addressing the needs of our learning community has also been as dynamic. Using the community feedback and examining district priorities, we crafted the grant to prioritize health and safety, learning loss for students in quarantine and social emotional health of our students. And then in terms of the summary of those categories, this is how we address those. We're also required to report out how we will spend this money within our school reopening plan. That is on the front page of the website. And we also just added um, a tab on the front page of the website under new additions on the implementation of these plans and how the money is being spent. And those you could find also on the front page of the NRSD website. But as it relates to health and safety, we've implemented the COVID test and stay nursing position as well as that programming. We've improved the ventilation systems and the Nishoba Regional High School locker rooms. As it relates to learning loss, you know that we added a variety of learning liaisons for students who are in quarantine, who are located at several buildings within our schools. They're working one-on-one with students as well as communicating with teachers. They're also helping fulfill some other roles within, um, and supporting roles within each of our schools. Uh, we've also um, put in other staffing to mitigate learning loss as determined. Social emotional support, we did add the Nishoba Regional High School Dean position, as you recall. Um, this S R three grant does carry over two years, so that will support the dean position for a couple of years. We are also add, able to add a point five social worker at the Nishoba Regional High School. You'll also remember that we added the student support center for when our high school students were out on full remote learning. Um, they were able to come into our student support center as well. And then as it relates to learning tools, we've added the Lexia system, which we did have during um, COVID and while students were out. We've added a variety of platforms, including the dyslexia screener program um, to Lexia. We've also, we are also piloting to um, math assessments through the Renaissance Learning Platform. We're going to add that platform next year, um, to have a variety of assessments through a variety of disciplines um, over the next two years. Uh, we have two schools who are piloting that work um, in Lancaster um, this year. Sean O'Shea at the Rollinson School and Laura Friend at Burbank Middle School are piloting that, that assessment system. All of our administration has had training on the Renaissance Learning Platform, um, and we're excited to bring that on for next year as well. And then obviously Zoom, we've kept our Zoom platforms, um, overwhelming um, support of parent conferencing and parent communication through the Zoom tool. Um, but we've also offered the in-person conferences as well. So we continue to use Zoom in ways that, you know, is beneficial and we see fit to support. Um, not only communication between school and home, but also our learning liaisons are able to use Zoom and connect with, with students who are out in quarantine already. Um, so that's a, an overview of how um, we applied for the grant, received the grant and how we um, crafted that survey to go out to the fa, um, the, the communities, uh, receive feedback and spend the money where folks in the community saw most fit.
Great, thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions around those elements of the superintendent's uh, report? Joe?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, actually, my question was for the um, Assistant Superintendent, uh, Dr. McGuire. Uh, on the uh, document that you just shared with us, there was something about disproportionate impact and learning loss and that twenty percent of those S R funds are dedicated to that, that particular aspect. Could you help me understand what exactly disproportionate impact and learning loss is?
Yeah, great question. So particularly for, that's why we've brought on, we, the additions to say Lexia, Lexia um, screens E L A. It brings in more assessments um, to screen students who may have, you know, had, had a gap in skill and or knowledge. It's why we've brought um, or con- concepts, content um, over the, the year that they were out. It's why we also are adding the Renaissance Assessment Platform so that we're able to have additional screeners for students through a variety of content areas, um, and screen students more so that we're able to identify any gaps in the learning. So that's where twenty percent of that funding needs to be going to those kinds of assessments as well as content and curriculum to make sure that we're addressing um, any gaps from, from the pandemic and the time that students were out.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, so thanks so much Todd and
You guys appreciate it.
Our superintendent's report. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda. Um, and that is the, I know that we're a little bit behind, side note, um, but I do see an item on the agenda that we're perhaps going to move to a future agenda, so never fear. Um, uh, we'll get to that in a little bit, but what we would like to do next is move on to new business. And that basically includes superintendent survey debrief, and this is the uh, Personnel Subcommittee. Mary and I just wanted to kind of circle back with you guys on some of the information regarding superintendent evaluation. And I'm going to share my screen so that we can um, show that with you, show that to you. Can everybody see that? All right, uh, so you guys probably know this, but I'll say it again, I can't see you because I'm in presentation mode, so if you need me, just yellow. Uh, so we hope this will be just a quick overview, one of the promised trainings, getting you guys ready and making you feel prepared for the superintendent evaluation, which will happen at the halfway point of the year and the end of the year. So uh, this is largely focused on the survey results, survey that each of you took, all eleven of us took it. And we're going to share the results with you kind of discreetly and then give a little bit of support, um, especially on the questions that there was a, a low level of understanding. So the first item we wanted to talk about was the fact that not many of us have had a lot of experience with the superintendent evaluation program, including our superintendent. So you know, this is going to be a learning experience, but hopefully you guys are going to get the training that you need to do your very best job here. So they have our experience level. We also asked the committee if um, we, what our understanding was with regard to this so-called five-step process of um, evaluation. This is true for teachers, this is true for all educators across the state with the new educator evaluation system. And so, you know, we're kind of iffy on this one. And so just a quick review of that five-step cycle. Remember that it kind of starts with a self-assessment. It then goes into goal setting, which we've completed. And then begins implementation. We are currently in the implementation stage. The mid-cycle review happens, as you might imagine, at the mid-year. Uh, for us, because we're, um, you know, just a, a little bit behind and rightfully so, bringing on a new superintendent, uh, our mid-cycle review will happen on March twenty-third. We'll then circle around to the final evaluation that will happen kind of late April, early May. And then based upon um, the report that we produce for Kirk and the evaluation that we provide, he will then engage in his next round of self-assessment and the cycle goes round and round. So we are in implementation right now, or I should say Kirk is. Uh, and we're heading toward that mid-cycle review. We also asked the committee if you could identify what the acronym SMART stands for when we're talking about SMART goals. Uh, we had some decent understanding here, but just as a quick reminder, when our superintendent set his goals, he was trying to make them specific or strategic, measurable, action-oriented, rigorous, timed and tracked. We also asked the committee if, you know, we were going to make our SMART goals Smart Eagles, as is recommended by M A S C. What do the I and the E stand for? And the committee felt pretty confident of this, although Mary did provide a little bit of a spoiler, thank you, Mary. Uh, the I and the E stand for uh, inclusion and equity. All right, so I'm going to hand it over to my partner, Mary, take it away.
Okay, thanks Leah. Um, and this question was asking whether you could explain the difference between the mid-cycle assessment and end-cycle summative assessment of the superintendent of schools. And uh, so we, we had quite a few who did understand that. Uh, and as Leah has, has said, the um, the summative evaluation, we're going to have training on that later in the year, April sixth, and that will be Dorothy Presser before the final summative evaluation. But coming up for us next is the mid-cycle assessment, which is also called the formative assessment. And uh, the Personnel Subcommittee, that is, Leah and I will be, be providing um, professional development for you on the mid-cycle assessment, which is much less um, pressure and it really is a check-in. So that's the difference there. Um, and the next question, can you explain how the school committee evaluates progress of the superintendent toward superintendent goals? And so we have, you know, somewhat, uh, so, a lot of people did understand and, and knows how we will um, be evaluating the progress of the superintendent. Remember, these are the superintendent's goals that we're talking about and we passed, uh, Kirk presented them to us and we passed them, um, voted on them. And the goal areas of professional practice, student learning and, and district improvement. And what we'll be doing in regard to those goals is deciding ultimately, when we get to the summative stage, whether um, the Kirk's performance has exceeded met, um, or has been a significant progress, some progress or did not meet the goals. So this is all about the SMART goals and these particular areas. So we can go on to the next one. So can you explain the rating scale for the four DESI standards, the superintendent evaluation? And um, some people could, but a lot of us uh, really, really couldn't. And so this is where everything gets a little tiny bit complicated. But when we're looking at those four standards of instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement and professional culture, we will be deciding, and this will be, uh, we will be deciding this together from our individual reports, whether uh, the, uh, the standards will be rated as exemplary, proficient, needs improvement or unsatisfactory. So we could go on to the next. So, and these are, these are what DESI uh, has for um, for all superintendents and those, these are the four categories. So partly as you're looking at this, I'm hoping that a lot of this seems as though you're saying, well, wait, we saw some of this before. And I'm hoping that also you're saying, well, we do know some of this now. It doesn't seem as foreign to us. But one of our points in doing this is to say that as, as our superintendent is in the implementation stage, we too are in the implementation stage in that what we're doing is uh, evaluating all the time. So you could go on to the next one, Leah. So do you know how the superintendent evaluation is different from other administrator evaluations? And um, some people did, some people have a somewhat of idea and other people know. So how, how it's different, one of the reasons, uh, one of the ways it's different is that the superintendent's evaluation is done by school committee and it is in public session, whereas no other administrator has the uh, extreme privilege of, of having uh, his or her performance evaluated in public. That's one reason. And the next one. Um, and so explaining the responsibility of the school committee regarding the superintendent of schools evaluation. This is one of our main provinces as school committee that we evaluate the superintendent. Uh, we, we evaluate the superintendent, but we don't supervise the superintendent. We choose the superintendent and then we evaluate the superintendent. Whereas just to go, to go back to the other, um, one of the other differences is that uh, Superintendent Downey, he, he would be um, evaluating and also supervising um, our assistant superintendent. Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent um, evaluate and also supervise principals, directors, et cetera. And then principals evaluate and supervise the, their staff. And so a, a main difference is, and it's, it's really worth understanding and remembering that we evaluate the performance of the superintendent of schools, but we don't supervise, we don't tell him. Um, you know, we don't, we don't get into that because that's the school management. So the next one.
Mary, if you mind, I'll just jump in. I want to make sure that everybody on the committee understands that as we get toward April and May, each of us is going to have to complete a formal written report of uh, which is, you know, kind of done through a very specific form. But I just want to get you all prepared for that, that that sort of a thing is coming. And so being mindful throughout the year, looking for evidence that Kirk is presenting to us on how he is meeting his goal, reaching for his goals and meeting his goals and also attending to the standards, the performance standards that Mary identified. You know, this is something that's going to be coming down the road for us. So just be mindful that that's one of our responsibilities.
And finally, um, in number ten, we, this is open, an open response. If there are other areas of superintendent evaluation you'd look, you would like cover in professional development, please list here. And so um, we have, we have listed those and you can certainly read that. But we, we thank very much our, our school committee members, um, all eleven of us filled, filled this out. And um, hopefully, you know, the message here is that we are constantly evaluating, looking at what our superintendent presents to us, his communications, his reports. Um, and evaluating, looking at the data, as Leah said, and asking questions. Um, and the next thing that will be coming up on March twenty-third will be, we will provide you with more professional development on the formative or the mid-cycle um, assessment, which is not a lot of pressure for us, um, more so somewhat for our superintendent. But then the final stage, summative, we will have Dorothy Presser from M A S C uh, give us a workshop in exact, in the whole process of that. And we have, April sixth will be the date for that. So hopefully this, this um, this seemed somewhat redundant and that you already know some of this. But we wanted to present to you um, the whole survey and all of the results. So that's it.
So I hope that that um, give you just another round of information here. Any questions for us on superintendent evaluation? Everybody feeling okay about it? Right. So that's the case, we will move on to next matter on our agenda, and that is Dear J action items. So um, because we, um, our Dear J liaison was not able to join us this evening and I, I would like to um, look at this when Sharon is able to be with us. And because none of it is incredibly pressing, um, I want to push this off to the next meeting just to um, basically give us a little bit more time to complete a couple of the tasks. I see Joe's hand, go ahead, Joe.
No, I was going to wait till you finish, Madam Chairman. I didn't want to interrupt you, just wait until you finish.
All right. So, you know, in particular, and I say this, by the way, you know, if, if there is no objection, um, that we would move this to the next meeting. And I think primarily because we wanted to make sure that the subcommittees all had an opportunity to answer all of the questions that Dear J had put before us. You know, Dear J is our advisory. In order for them to advise us, they need some baseline information. And so a survey was sent out to all the subcommittees. I know a couple have completed it. And um, a couple of the other ones are meeting shortly to do so as well. And so I thought that on January 12th, we could attend to these items on the agenda all at one time. And so I would ask that without objection, we move this to the January 12th meeting. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, actually, I was going to actually move the table until a further meeting, Madam Chairman. Uh, for all the reasons which you stated, but for some additional reasons as well. Yeah, I, I found a little curious that this was on the agenda this evening and that there was nobody here from DRJ to speak to the presentment. So um, what I would, and I don't know if anybody from DRJ is watching or listening, but if they are, uh, at least one-eleventh of this committee would be most appreciative of a representative from DRJ coming before this committee, perhaps on the 12th to present this letter formally. So the inquiry could be made of the chair and other members of the DRJ regarding this rather extensive uh, uh, missive that they have sent to the uh, to the district committee. In addition to that, and again, I, I'm not intimate with all the inner workings of the DRJ, but it looks as if from their minutes that they are operating at this point without a chairperson, without any sort of executive officers. I think that they had noted in the minutes that they wanted to wait until they had uh, a greater number of people in attendance at their meetings before they went ahead and voted on a, a chair. Um, again, one-eleventh of this committee would be most appreciative of, even with that small number, that they take it upon themselves to elect a chair to somebody who can come before this committee in addition to Ms. Park to, to speak to these uh, uh, to this letter. There's, I, I have a lot of questions regarding what it is they're asking of the, the district committee and further of our subcommittees. So that's all I'll say on that, Madam. I would really hope that somebody from DRJ would be here at the next meeting to, or excuse me, uh, yeah, I, the next meeting in January to address the presentment that they've uh, provided to the committee.
All right, I will definitely extend that invitation and let um, Dear Jane know this. I'm sure Sharon, I'll work with Sharon to make sure that, that um, that message is sent. I do think they do have a chairperson because I've um, spoken with the chairperson a little bit. Todd, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sure, I was just gonna add, um, it probably makes a lot of sense for you folks to move it. Um, Kirk had an opportunity to meet with her uh, today. Um, and also teaching and learning also has reached out to, to Dear J as well. And we've got a meeting. My team has a meeting set up with them. Um, and we're gonna hopefully do some working collaboration with them around our March 18th uh, professional development day as well. So we have some things kind of in the pipeline going with them. So we can certainly, I'm sure he would report out on his meeting as well as we could do the same.
Excellent. Go ahead, Joe. Or Joe, is that still your hand up? You're, Joe, can't hear you.
I apologize, Madam Chairman, I'm going on. Thank you. Uh, no, I was just gonna ask Dr. McGuire, uh, because I'm, I'm looking at the minutes of the DRJ and uh, it doesn't seem to indicate in the minutes who the chair. Could you identify who the chair is?
Uh, my understanding is it's Lori Burnett. Yes?
That is who he met with. Um, yes. So that was my understanding as well.
The fabulous Lori Burnett. So she is.
Yeah.
So yeah, um, I'm sure if she is not, uh, she will make sure that the right person kind of um, rises to the task for you. I think that's a great suggestion, Joe. So let's move all of this to the 12th. It'll give us a little bit more time to um, put some more thought into this so that we don't rush anything through. Um, but I will say one more time, uh, I think that communication is going to meet to answer all of the, uh, to answer the survey, the Dear J survey. And I think budget and warrant maybe met last night and included this in their conversation. So feel free to either send along your results or just complete the survey. Uh, either way is fine by me. Um, and that's that. So without objection, I will move this to the next meeting. All right, seeing none. Let's move on. Pat, this is your moment to shine.
My moment.
Thank you so much for being patient again. Director of Business and Operations.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to share a PowerPoint and it says things in a little bit different order. Uh, I hope you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay. So one of the things that I'm bringing forward before the committee today for consideration and um, possibly vote at the next meeting is a proposed facilities rate change. And this is an uh, this particular report on the PowerPoint. I know it's difficult to read, but if there is another um, version of it, um, also in with the meeting materials. But we haven't made any um, updates to this rate um, since for five years. So I think it's, it was really time for us to take a look at this and how we're starting to open up a little bit more and we really need to catch up with our surrounding towns. Uh, Rob Frieswick and myself and also um, Tony Rich took a good look at these rates. Um, and uh, the rates of the town of Hudson, town of Clinton, Marlboro, and also Shrewsbury. And we came up with a, a new rate structure. And this is an hourly rate for use of our buildings and for um, billable custodial and cafeteria workers. Now, one thing that you will notice on this report, and it came up in the budget warrant subcommittee meeting. You'll see that I put in the elementary schools and the middle schools in a previous structure. We didn't really have anything in there for that. Um, so I thought that it was important that we at least have something in there for that. And it should be consistent with the other schools. So.
Did you share the, are you trying to share the presentation with us yet?
Oh, it didn't share?
No, it didn't come up yet.
I, I can do it. It's the, it's the rate.
Pat, I got it up. I'll take care of it. You got it up?
What a team, what a team.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. You were doing a great job explaining it.
Okay.
There it is. Yep.
I don't know. Okay, so there it is. So does anybody have any questions about these changes? Um, I'd like to put it forward for a vote at the next meeting. No?
Eve.
I just have one quick question.
Hi Karen.
And I just, I don't know if it's a typo or if I just don't understand it, but the um, kitchen cafeteria worker for the middle school for nonprofit for 22, it's 30. And then for for profit, it's zero?
Well, that, that would be a typo too. That should be the same. I'll fix that and I'll put that back up.
And I just want to make sure I understand. So any of these things, if anybody nonprofit or for profit wants to rent, you have to rent for four hours minimum. Is that four hours, like consecutive hours? Or is it like if a?
Yes. It is consecutive.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead Steve.
Uh, these, these uh, changes in the rates were reviewed by the budget and warrant committee on Monday. And our recommendation was for approval, which will happen next, at our next meeting.
Excellent. I put it on the planning calendar. Any other questions about the numbers?
Next slide please. Alita, can you change the next slide, please? Thank you. One of the other uh, items that I wanted to um, bring up was the E and D update. And I've given you a definition of what E and D, and it's also known as free cash. Uh, it's a revenue source which results from the calculation as of July 1st of a regional school district and also for municipalities remaining unrestricted funds from operations of the previous fiscal year based on balance, on the balance sheet as of June 30th. So basically what it is, is at the end of the year, whatever excess revenue we have or un, unexpended um, funds from the budget together are added and accumulated over the years. And we also use this money as a um, revenue source in our budget. So it, it can go up and down depending on how much of a surplus we may have at the end of the year or if we get surplus revenue. Uh, we submit this to the Department of Local Services at the end of October. Um, the workbook that I submitted right now has at a 1,0147,169 dollars. I'm waiting for certification. Um, they seem to be a little bit slow and other years I've had it a little bit sooner than this, but um, I expect it pretty soon. Does anybody have any questions about E and D, what it is, how we use it?
Hi Mike.
Pat, can you just share with us, um, if you can recall, I hope I don't put you on the spot here, how much we pulled from E and D for the FY22 budget?
One, 1.2 million.
So i- is it our hope? I think as in years past, it's, it's been our expectation that we were able to at least temporarily return that money back in?
Yes, we do try to do that, or at least a good portion of it every year. I mean, 1.2 I think is the, the largest amount that I've seen used in the budget over the years.
Yeah.
Um, except for the year that we um, we had a surplus revenue and we used some additional funds and we funded um, the full day kindergarten for the gap year. But uh, 1.2 is probably the highest for a standard um, fiscal budget that I've seen.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, I have a question or a comment. Um, so my rough math shows that this is a little less than 2% of the budget. Is that right?
That's correct.
And uh, this needs to be less than 5%. Is that right? Otherwise?
That's correct.
That money needs to be returned back to the, to uh, the member towns. So I just wanted to remark, I think that's a pretty important uh, detail to share with people that the district is not um, hoarding cash where they're spending it wisely and within the limits of the law and the spirit of the agreement.
Thank you, Rich.
All right. Let's start.
Um, the next topic I have to discuss is capital expenditures. And I just want to kind of go over my process of what that actually is. Um, every budget season that uh, member towns ask us for a five-year capital plan. Um, and we detail um, you know, what kind of things need to be repaired that are, uh, $10,000 are over in the buildings. And this does not include the high school. So um, we usually go to the FINCOM um, for a meeting. We discuss things and they, you know, talk whether or not, you know, talk to us about whether or not this is something that has to be done now. And they have their concerns because they're using their money to pay for this. So um, it, it's, it's a really um, a great conversation to have. And especially when we have it year after year and they, they have a better understanding of what's going on in the buildings. Um, and ultimately what happens is these expenditures are um, appear on the town warrant in May if they are passed through the FINCOMs. And they, the public and in the communities has an opportunity to decide whether or not they want to spend the money on this capital expenditure. Next slide, please.
Before, before you go to the next slide, I'd, I'd just like to uh, make note that one of the current issues in the capital expenditure line for the district is the uh, repair and sir, uh, for, uh, what is it? Mary Rolinson?
Yeah, Pat. Rolinson in Burbank, yes.
Right, and with the Burbank, the heating system uh, needs some significant, well over $100,000, as I recall the numbers um, of repair. And over and above that, we're having to rent a portable uh, system for the schools. But this all um, once again, this is a capital expenditure. And it will all fall uh, not upon the school committee's budget, but upon the town budget.
That's correct. Next slide, please. Um, this is the definition of the capital project and this is just for your information. Um, you can go on to the next slide. Um, capital expenditures for the regional high school and for district-wide use are the responsible of the region, the full district. And I fund it through our regular appropriation from the, the member towns. So in our budget, um, any capital expenditures would be built in. Um, for fiscal year 23 capital, no major capital repairs at the high school. We're in repair and replace if necessary due to possible new construction and renovation project. Um, provisions have been budgeted in the scheduled maintenance line of the facilities budget to make any repairs that would be like not, um, I wouldn't call them major, but just to get us through this period. Um, and at least to a point if we determine if we're going to build a new school, we renovate. Or if it doesn't happen at all, then we'll, we'll have to take another um, look at that and see what needs to be done in the building. Next slide, please. Um, for district-wide capital would be, it would be something that all the schools in the district use. Um, we evergreen our um, our fleet uh, in its aging. We tried to get um, to replace the oldest vehicles um, at least one a year. And um, one of our student vans is up for replacement. And that's in the budget for 23. For Bolton, um, we have not met with FINCOM with any of the three towns. But I'm going to tell you what we're um, going to present to them. And again, this does not mean that we will actually have this put on to a town warrant. We will have a discussion with their FINCOM and they will decide what they want to do or what portion of what, of, of a project they want to do. Um, but again, these are capital projects and it would be their responsibility. At the Emerson Building, um, we're looking for um, a backup generator, generator uh, because of the um, district offices being in place there. Um, and some carpet replacement. Uh, and when I say replacement, not, we're not replacing with carpet. We are replacing with VCT tile. And that would be at the Florence Sawyer School, not at the Emerson. The next slide. At Lang, at Lancaster, we're looking to replace the second boiler. There are two boilers um, that operate that building. The second boiler uh, is also in need of replacement. Um, we are putting that on as a capital request for this year. There are some carpets that need to be replaced throughout the building. We are looking to replace the new uh, the marquee sign because it's in um, in need of major repairs. We can't get parts for it. Um, there are five classrooms that need VCT flooring replacement. And we're also, um, we've been without a synchronized clock system in those buildings for many years. We really need that. For Stowe, um, again, this is the second year in a row. We put the Hartley Road widening on. Last year it didn't make it. But that doesn't mean it won't make it this year. Um, it's a safety issue. Um, we've talked to the police about it. Um, the police department in Stowe. And there's on, ongoing discussions as to whether or not this is the right time to do that. We'll find out again when we go to their, their FINCOMs. And also we're putting forward um, the Hill Gym Floor needs refinishing. And that's a major undertaking. And I believe it's bringing it right down uh, below the normal polishing that they do annually. And I think that um, that is something that we're really gonna press for this year. And that's it. Anybody have any questions about the capital? And the process that goes on?
Do you have an idea of when you're going to be meeting with the FINCOMs, Pat?
Usually they send something out to me around this time. Usually, they send something out to me around this time. As a matter of fact, for Stowe, I sent an email out to Steve, I'm not sure how to pronounce his last name. He's the Chair of the Capital Planning Committee, and asked him, you know, when we were going to get on. Bolton, I would imagine is going to be pretty soon, and Lancaster, I I don't know when that's going to happen.
Rich?
Forgive my ignorance, or if I forgot, what is the operating cost to have the supplemental boiler in Lancaster? Because that that is that cost encumbered by the district?
No, it it will be paid for by the town of Lancaster.
The current supplemental boiler that we have that's helping to keep the school?
Lancaster will pay for that. We're not paying for that.
So we 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 expend the money now, but we recover that as part of the assessment?
Right, they have to have a special town meeting, I, from what I understand. I don't know what the status of that is yet. Joe, maybe you know what the status of that is?
Yeah, that's why I raised my hand, Pat.
For Joe.
Yes, Mr. Eckel is correct. As far as the reimbursement for the boiler remediation is essentially on the town of Lancaster. It's their building, their responsibility, and they will eventually pay for it. Unfortunately, the town of Lancaster hasn't planned or hasn't scheduled its fall town meeting until February of two thousand and twenty-two. So we are expecting that the the issue of the boiler reimbursement remediation will be on that town warrant for the fall of twenty-one town meeting in February of two thousand and twenty-two. But it has been a long and arduous journey to get the town to schedule that town meeting and to get our matter on the agenda. But essentially, Mr. Eckel is correct. It's we may have to pay for this initially, but we will get reimbursement from the town of Lancaster.
And I do have an update in regards to that. The boiler is, has arrived. Everything is there. They're doing the electrical right now, and I don't have a date of when they're going to be up and running, but it should be soon. So, you know, the possibility of still waiting for the parts to come in is not as dire as we thought it could be if it went, you know, past December into January. So I'll have more information about that. Rob Friesworth will update us on that soon.
Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
And that ha- that's it for you, right?
No, one more thing.
Oh, so sorry. Go ahead.
The November results of operations. I think I could share that. See if it works this time. No, it's not showing up.
I'll get it, Pat.
Okay. Thank you, Alita. So again, it's probably, you're probably better off looking at the materials that are in the packet for today. The print on this is really small. And I did make one little change for the request of the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee to the negative balances. Rich, I don't know if you noticed that. It looks like things haven't really changed very much at this point, but I can tell you that we will have some changes in December. Seeing as we've settled on how we're going to spend some of our grant money and some additional grant money that came in. So there will be some changes here. Again, I'm watching utility costs because we're still keeping the windows open. There's no real way to determine what the costs are going to be because it's all dependent on the weather. We've been so lucky up until this point. But again, there are some some increases in costs that I'm seeing trend, you know, with the windows open even at this time of year. We do have a little bit of savings in out-of-district tuition, and that's what is reflected in special ed. Again, that is one of those lines in the budget that is volatile. We never know when a student will move in. We continue to always monitor that, and I will keep you updated if there are any significant changes in regards to that, and I'm sure that Joan can give you a better idea of, you know, exactly how that is being affected by bringing program people into programs in the district. There's a significant savings there, and I'm sure that it's partially because of that. A lot of the expenditures, the surpluses that you may see here may fluctuate a little bit only because we were replacing some staff. We had a few people that weren't on board yet in our accounting system. I've accounted for most of them, but you'll see again in December, there'll be some significant changes because I've made a lot of changes in the last couple of days. Does anybody else have any questions?
Yeah. All right, I'm seeing no hands. So you're a good teacher, Pat. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alita.
All right. So friends, we're going to move on now to our Student Representative Report. And for good reason, neither of our reps could be with us tonight, so we're sad about that, I'm sure. But I just, on this note, a couple of things. I want to make sure that we understand with this new situation, kind of how to best operate with our student representatives. A student report, when given, should be formalized to a certain extent, and that should hopefully continue to come to us in that regard. And then we need to be really mindful about not veering outside of the report. We don't want to have any violations of open meeting law or anything like that. So and anything that you hear from the students that you are questioning or would like more information on, we're going to funnel that to Superintendent Downing so that he can kind of field those appropriately moving forward. So next time around, when Sonia and Dan are here, we'll try to kind of abide by that. This is all new to us. All right, so we're going to move on to unfinished business now. And we have several approvals here. These are votes that we're going to be taking on all each of these items. And we have motions for this, which I rely upon Mike to provide. So Mike, would you like to start off with the approval of school improvement plans?
Sure. I move to approve the school improvement plans for Hill Middle School, Luther Burbank Middle School, and Florence Sawyer School as presented on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. And Mary Rowlinson Elementary School, the Center School, and the Shoboe Regional High School is presented on December first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. Thanks, Mary. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll take the roll. Joe?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sean? Well, I think I lost Sean. Okay, so that might be an abstention, Alita. So let us now move on. By the way, I assume that the vote, the motion passes, right, Alita? Let's move on to our next item. And that is the approval of rate increases for extended learning. This was presented at our last meeting. Mike?
I'll move to approve a four percent rate increase for extended learning before and after school programs effective for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Any discussion? All right, Joe?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. Karen?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Sean? Okay. Motion passes. Let's move on to the next item, unfinished business, and that's the approval of tuition increase for preschool.
I will move to approve a three percent tuition increase for integrated preschool effective for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mary got it. Any discussion? All right, let's go. Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Excellent. All right, and our last matter of unfinished business. This is the approval of substitute daily rate increase.
Right, so I'll approve, sorry, I'll move to approve the substitute rate increase to one hundred dollars per day for teachers and instructional assistants effective January third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Have a second.
Second.
Thanks, Steve. Any discussion? All right, Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Karen?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Yeah.
Myself, yes. So the motion passes. Excellent. All right, so moving past unfinished business, business, we'll now go to our subcommittee reports. And I would like to point out that we are two minutes ahead of schedule. Good job, people. So subcommittees, we'll start with budget and warrant.
Madam Chair, the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee met on Monday evening, and we reviewed the operations report for November, and any questions we had were were met by Ms. Maroni. We also discussed the school rental rates and made a recommendation that they be approved by this full committee, which I noted earlier this evening. And we did have a question by one, by the member of the representative of the FinCom who was the, there was a representative of each of the three FinComs invited to audit, basically, our meetings. But Mr. Trussell from Lancaster had asked in a previous meeting when Lancaster would be asked to put up the half a million dollars, which was their share of the feasibility study for the new school. And it was explained to them by Ms. Maroni and myself that they would not be asked to put up five hundred thousand dollars as their share of the feasibility study, but that rather this would be handled by the school district selling short-term bonds. I, I, there was some, some bonds in anticipation of revenue that would be forthcoming.
Bond anticipation note, Stephen.
Okay, bond, ban, that's right. Okay, that was the acronym that was used. As well as the fact that these ultimately would be rolled over into the total cost of either the new school or the renovation of the existing school. We did discuss the Dear J survey, survey, and Mr. Horish and Mr. Eckel were tasked with coming up with some of our answers to to that particular survey. And now that we're going to be doing, we have a little more time to do that. We look forward to hearing what some of the things they're looking for from, particularly from a budget and warrant point of view at the January twelfth meeting. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Mike, is your hand up?
Yeah.
Yes. Actually, my hand was up right after the vote. This is a little bit of an editorialization. I really just wanted to thank you for presenting items as new business and then voting on it in a subsequent meeting as unfinished business. As you know, we've had, we've had challenges in the past trying to do that, and I think the extra time gives us a chance to process it, gather feedback from the community, and help us make more informed decisions, understanding that that can't happen for every item. When it does happen, it's tremendously helpful, so. Thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure, and I will definitely tip my cap to Alita and her mastery of the agenda. All right, so to our next subcommittee report, and Amy, I hope that you don't feel too rushed here, but you're you're back from your concert right in the nick of time. Thank you so much for rejoining. I hope that it went well.
It was, it was amazing. Some really amazing musicians.
That's awesome.
School district.
Congrats to our wonderful music program. So Communication Subcommittee Report.
Yeah, I think that the only thing we have to report is that we're meeting again on the twentieth. We're going to be taking up the Dear J questions and reviewing a survey for that in collaboration with Superintendent Downing, that he is wanting to send out as part of his entry plan process and that we are going to be providing feedback on. I feel like there might be one other item on the agenda. If Mike can remember that, he can chime in. But otherwise, we're meeting on the twentieth. We don't have much to report.
All right, great.
We do also have the, sorry, I can't recall if you said this.
I.
The review of the survey, yeah.
Yeah, and the only other thing we're going to be bringing to the committee at the next meeting is potentially a recommendation for holding office hours before school committee meetings as a way to broaden opportunities for engagement with the school committee. So that is on our agenda, and hopefully we can kind of flesh out more how that would work. And then bring it to the committee for consideration.
Interesting. Thanks so much, guys.
Yep.
I will not skip over you this time. Our NRHS School Building Committee Report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Building Committee met yesterday evening, and before I go on with the report, I do want to thank Ms. Deverito, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Rubenstein, and Superintendent Downing in abstention this evening for accommodating an earlier start time last night, much like with Ms. Cohen, I too had a musical conflict last night. And thank you very much for allowing me to attend that concert as well as chair the meeting last night. In regards to what transpired yesterday, that was a pretty important day for our district and our building committee. The Design Selection Subcommittee had finalized its interviews of the two last finalists, which were Kessel Booth Associates and Jeremy Rosen Anderson. And the Design Selection Subcommittee did report to the full committee that Kessel Booth Associates of Foxborough, Massachusetts has been selected as our designer for the build project. Now, just to give a little background on this particular design firm, they worked with our OPM, Skansky USA, in the design and construction of Minuteman Regional High School, Minuteman Regional Tech High School. And part of the reason that Kessel Booth was chosen was that not only have they worked with Skans in the past, but they have a familiarity with our district. You know, our district is part of the Minuteman School District. They've worked with our communities in the past. And it was felt by both the OPM and by our Design Selection Committee that that this would be an important characteristic to have moving forward with regards to this particular process. There were some, so nuances and subtleties relative to the the Minuteman Project. Those of you who don't know, Minuteman is actually in two towns. It's actually part of the campuses in Lincoln, part of it's in Lexington. And I think a lot of their efforts had to be duplicated because I had to go to two different towns, two different boards, and getting all the approvals throughout that process. So I think the committee is very excited to bring on Kessel Booth Associates. There's some additional good news in this regard. The the committee had voted to approve a cap of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for design services. Mary Ann Williams from Skansky USA, our OPM, did report out last night that they have a tentative understanding that Kessel Booth Associates will be looking to secure a contract for design services for eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So this gives a little bit more money in the clapper when we move forward in regards to this project. I do want to again thank Superintendent Downing, Mr. Ken Fromer of Lexington, and our CPO, Ms. Maroni, for all their hard work in this. And Madam Chair, with your permission, I was wondering, I didn't get an opportunity last night, and I felt a little remiss in doing so, to not give Ms. Maroni just maybe a thirty seconds to maybe add in something, her observations in regards to the to the design. to not give Ms. Maroni just maybe a thirty seconds to maybe add in something, uh, her observations in regards to the, to the design selection process. Forgive me, Pat, I kept my eye on that, that clock last night. I wanted to get there for six thirty for the concert, so. Uh, I, I didn't, I did not forget you, so I would like, if, if you wouldn't mind, I, could I, could I give, could I, could I give a little bit of time to Ms. Maroni to just give a little insight into this, because Superintendent Downing is not here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, the, the process was really, um, quite good. Um, they had, um, all kinds of, um, people from all different buildings. Building trades, architecture, um, uh, facilities, management across the state, all on the board. And, and again, they were all voting members. And then the three of us were also voting. So they did take the time to listen to our concerns. And I believe that, um, they heard our concerns because it was a majority vote. At the end of the day, I believe there were fourteen people in total on, on the panel. And I think that, um, I think that our concerns about making sure that we had somebody that could communicate the, the true needs of, um, the school, uh, across the district. Um, and who, somebody who had experience in doing that. I think that that was, um, heard and, uh, like I said, um, that's why the majority vote was for Kessel Booths. And I was very happy with that, I'll tell you. The process is, is, um, very good, very, um, transparent because you, you vote right then and there, right after the, the interviews. So it was very nice. I, I really, um, respected the, the format.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. And I'll conclude my report, Madam Chair, by just letting the committee know that our next meeting is scheduled for the eighteenth of, uh, January, but I do believe that it is anticipated that we should have the contract finalized prior to that date. So hopefully by our next meeting in January, we will be reporting that we're in a contract with our designer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Joe. Thank you to the whole team. I'm so excited that we have or are nearly close to finalizing the team for this really important project. It's been a lot of work for a lot of people and I'm so appreciative for our kids, uh, you know, all the work that you're doing for our kids. So Joe, you're a fearless leader. I really appreciate it. Uh, I just want to add two quick things to Joe's report. Uh, the first thing is, um, they noted last night that one of the things Kessel Booths brings to the table is that they have experience working with complex sites. And I know that that was something that, um, you know, we have a complex site at, at our high school. If we were to reuse that land, um, or just to build out on the, on the existing building, whatever the case may be. There's some complexities to our site that, um, they felt confident Kessel Booths was, had a lock on that aspect. The second thing I'll add is that we are going to, as a district school committee, need to vote on the designer contract. And so I'm gonna be emailing all of you to ask you for a pop-up meeting on Wednesday, January fifth. And this will be a one-item agenda to vote on the contract. It's actually pretty important that we do that because, um, our owners, our project owners rep basically wants to bring the design team in as a whole to meet all of us and meet the, the subcommittee. And, um, of course, that meeting's open to anyone, so all of you can join. But we need to finalize the contract before all of the, all of the cascading events that need to happen between now and June can get started. So I hope that we can get a quorum for January fifth. If you want, put it in your calendars now, but I will email you. Uh, Mary?
On January fifth, would the meeting begin at six thirty?
I was actually gonna put it at seven.
Okay, so that, that's a head-on, um, um, conflict with the RAAAC. That's our meeting, it's at seven o'clock.
Okay, we can go six thirty, Mary.
That would be good because then, then, because we have three members, um, on school committee and I'm sure they would like to be able to be at both. Thank you.
Yeah, Amy.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add that I thought was important from, um, the shareout from the designer selection subcommittee uh, last night was that KBA worked, maybe Pat mentioned this or Joe did, but, uh, KBA was the designer and architect for Minuteman. Um, and, um, yeah, you did say that, but the, the, the piece of that that was missing was that they have relationships with a lot of with, you know, some of our member towns that will become important as this process plays out. Um, and then that was a key factor in selecting, at least that's what I got out of the discussion last night. And I thought that was, that was really good feedback from somebody who wasn't a part of the process, so.
Alright, so we'll move on to our next subcommittee report, and that is personnel. And as its chair, I will say we have nothing more to share that we haven't already shared tonight. So we'll move on to policy.
Uh, yes, uh, policy met on December sixth. Um, we went over the Dear J questions and took notes on that, so we'll hold off until January to discuss that. And then we also, um, started discussions on a couple of policy updates. Uh, one around residency, another one that was sent, uh, regarding fiscal policy from MASC. So, uh, we will bring those to the committee in January for, uh, discussion and review.
Excellent, thanks, Karen. So to our advisories, uh, Rich, do we have anything from the audit advisory?
Uh, no, we're waiting for our, our new, um, our previous members, I believe they're gonna be reappointed. Um, so I'd asked them to be reappointed and talk to select boards. That hasn't happened yet, so. I literally just sent you like maybe ten minutes ago, Leah. Uh, I looked at what we did last year and the former chair sent a letter to the select boards. And so I sent you the wording for that letter that perhaps you could send to the Bolton and Lancaster Select Board since the stove member is still valid.
I will do. Yes, sir. Uh, Dear J is, uh, Sharon is not here tonight, so we'll hold off on a Dear J report, but the twelfth, we will engage there. And to Dr. McCarthy for our, our triple A C subcommittee report.
That's, that's right. And so we met on twelve eighth. And, um, the good news is that we have eight now of, um, nine members. And, uh, and I want to thank our chairperson, Leah Viverido, for putting the message out in one more place on social media and right away, Jen Fletcher, who is a Lancaster resident, um, heard the call, found the call and, and said yes. And, uh, so she was at a meeting with us. She was not, uh, she, she's a good sport. And she wasn't intimidated by the number of documents there are. Um, and so she's, she's on board. And the Lancaster Select Board and Finance, uh, working together, trying to find one more member for us, but also we put out other, um, inquiries and, and hopefully we would have one more member from Lancaster. Um, I, I would like to say too that the board, um, the, the advisory is, um, a dedicated diligent group. I want to thank Steve and Sharon for being on this committee. We'll be meeting again on January fifth. And we, it takes a while for, uh, a group to gel and to come up with a way of operating. And we had a couple of, I mean, just little setbacks, um, in terms of technology on my part. Uh, but I've learned, it's been a wonderful learning curve for me in, um, putting documents up and realizing how to, um, how to record meetings on Zoom, just little things. And I'm, I'm just covetous of every minute that the RAAAC meets. And so I can say that we're on a roll now. And I, and I have already, we've posted what, um, needs to be looked at for the January fifth meeting. So that is posted, the working, working document. And, uh, people will have, I hope, enough time so that on our two meetings, um, that we have scheduled in January. I think we're gonna be able to, um, to really go through the whole, the whole agreement and make any of the recommendations and changes. Um, and so I'm, I'm optimistic and grateful. And that's the report.
Thanks, Mary. Um, and sorry, I just lost my agenda. Uh, to Brett, RC PAC liaison.
No report.
Oh, that's right. Thanks, Brett. Um, alright, guys, so I think I got everybody. Alright, we're gonna move on to items for next agenda. So I have here the planning calendar. Uh, so just note, guys, that February and April, we only have one meeting scheduled. If that needs to change, I'll let you know. Um, but keep in mind, January fifth, six thirty PM for one agenda item to approve the designer contract is on board. Looking at this planning calendar, if you see something that needs to be added. Just, um, yell out because I can't see you all. This too, guys, is, uh, I think what Steve was talking about earlier that we can perhaps talk about on the twelfth. Not hearing anybody? So you're feeling this, this is all we need? Okay. Oh, I see Rich's hand, maybe?
I was giving you a okay sign, like, thank you.
Okay, good. Alright, guys.
Yeah, I do have one clarification. Um,
Go for it.
You'd asked for an agenda item at that meeting, the, for this communications subcommittee. Um, regarding our developing recommendation for having school committee member office hours. I didn't see that up there.
Yeah, that was here. Hmm. Oh, I have it on the twenty-sixth. Right on the twelfth because the twelfth is a little heavy.
That, that's fine. Uh, Mike, do you have something to offer with that or?
I don't mind putting it on the twelfth. What do you think? Okay, Amy, what do you think? Twelfth or tw- uh, twenty-sixth?
Why don't we put it on the twelfth? We can always push it back to the twenty-sixth if we need to and
Indeed.
Keep it moving, so.
Yep. Okay, it's there.
Thank you very much.
Mike, a different question?
Yeah, I'm just returning back to, um, a request that I made in the fall, earlier in the fall. I don't know if this is already on the, um, uh, a future agenda, but, uh, uh, do we have space set out for, um, discussing a return to in-person meetings?
Yes, so that is gonna need to be dealt with by early April and this is something that, um, Kirk and I talk about at our Wednesday weekly meetings every single time. Um, and it's really on the school district to, to figure out how to facilitate this. Uh, but come April, it's gotta happen.
What do you mean it's on the district? You meaning, meaning us?
No, it's on, um, the technology.
Oh, I see. I see. Would it be worth it to just at least have some sort of preliminary discussion so we can hash out some of the challenges?
Uh, yeah. You wanna maybe? Is March too late? Or maybe March could just be like the sharing out of the prop, like the plan that's been developed. Behind the scenes, they can develop a plan on March ninth. Anything else?
On March ninth, won't you have to do the budget?
Yep, budget final vote. I have that.
Yep.
Got it. And, uh, we also have the public hearing for the budget scheduled for February ninth, which will be before the regular meeting, just FYI, everybody. Alright, I don't, not seeing any other hands, but of course, if you guys think of something uh, after you X out, just let me know. And I think at this point, I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second that.
Thanks, Amy. Alright, Joe?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
Excellent. And guys, um, just before you go, Kirk, I'm sure sends his apologies. He was pulled away and he let me know um, that it wasn't to be helped, so, um, not a big deal. Just couldn't get back to the screen, so. That's all for tonight, guys.
Everyone, have a merry.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Happy holidays.